Right now, the day's biggest news stories from a Vegas perspective. This is the Vegas Take with Sharp and Shapiro.
All right, welcome back. It is the Vegas Take, Sharp and Shapiro. Let's take a nice, deep breath, ladies and gentlemen. That was a fiery interview. We just had Wayne Allen Root on, and obviously, I don't think we're going to be grabbing a beer after the show. But if you missed that interview, we'll put it up on our Twitter page, on our YouTube page, all of our social media platforms. That was certainly an interview that we both got into it. He called me some names, I called him some names. But the ironic thing about that whole interview was that he was complaining yesterday that I called him a name, and he did the exact same thing to me live on the air. What does that say about somebody's character? Anyway, we're going to all take a deep breath, we're all going to take a step back.
Yeah, he definitely called you a putz.
I've been called worse, by the way.
Yeah, exactly. It's not every day that you systematically dismantle a nationally syndicated radio host on our show, but that is literally what just took place.
Well, let me say this, here's the big difference here. I'm not going to call his general manager or his radio station, and I'm not going to whine like a little girl and complain, "Ooh, he called me a putz." I'm going to file a lawsuit. That's not what we do here. He's entitled to think whatever he wants about me, and he can say whatever he wants, because quite frankly, I really don't care.
And for the record, you did apologize.
I did at the beginning, until he called me a name. Then that's what kind of set me off. But anyway, welcome back to the show. Again, that was a great interview, at least I thought it was fun. I had a good time, I don't know if Wayne did, but we'll post that up on our social media platforms. You know, we've had different Clark County Commissioners, you know, on the show from time to time. Lawrence Weekly is no exception. He came on our show a few months ago, we had a great interview with him, and we were all so excited about this NFL draft coming up. Who would have thought that we would be in the times we are in now? It's a sad situation, obviously, the health of people come first, but Clark County Commissioner's very own Lawrence Weekly joining us right now on the line. Lawrence, I know it's been a very trying week for you and for everybody, but how are you holding up?
Hey, man, let me first of all thank both of you gentlemen so very much, and I just want to say, because I don't want to get in the middle of your stuff, but you guys are gentlemen, right?
Thank you.
So regardless of whether Wayne called you a name or not, remember, you are a gentleman at all times, even when no one's watching or listening, so.
I appreciate that, Lawrence. Thank you for your kind words. We just don't like putting up with crap here on this show. But Lawrence, I appreciate that. You know, as I mentioned, you came on our show a few months ago, we were all so excited about this NFL draft, and I know there's bigger fish to fry now. Obviously, your priority is taking care of the people here in Las Vegas, making sure they're healthy and safe. But just from your standpoint personally, Lawrence, I mean, how disappointed are you that it doesn't appear as though this is going to happen?
I'm extremely disappointed. I'm really heartbroken, because a lot of time and a lot of effort is definitely put into bringing something fantastic to Las Vegas. It's been a long time coming. And, you know, I would say that there is a lot of disappointment, but let me just say this, I'm so optimistic, and you guys are as well, that, hey, when one door closes, another one's going to open, and I just think something bigger and better and greater is on the way for Las Vegas. And so, don't fret, let's take care of each other, let's get through this crisis, and then let's just know that and believe that something greater is on the way.
Commissioner Weekly, I'm glad you brought that up, because that's what I've been telling people over the course of the last couple of days. I said, "Look," you know, I did a national interview the other day, and I said, "Look, here's the deal. It sucks," for lack of a better term, "that the NFL draft isn't happening this year in Vegas, but let's be honest with this, we're going to have the NFL draft here eventually soon, once this, hopefully, this coronavirus subsides, we hope it does sooner than later. We're going to have the Super Bowl here, right, Commissioner? I mean, we're going to have all these things here eventually."
These things are bound to happen right here in Las Vegas, and you look around the country, I'm going to tell you guys something, last night, my wife and I, we were just kind of so bored, there's only so many more movies you can watch, and, you know, you clean out the garage, you start working on closets and packaging up clothes you can donate or what have you. We just decided, you know what, we just want to see what our city really looks like after dark, and we got in the car, we did, and we drove down Las Vegas Boulevard, all the way from the SLS, all the way down past Mandalay Bay. And it pretty much almost brought tears to my eyes, because I'm a native Nevadaan, and it just really hurt my spirit to see this is where we are. I've never seen anything like this before. Man, I'm getting choked up talking about it as we speak.
No, Commissioner, you're right. I mean, I was driving down the strip the other day, and as I was driving down the strip the other day, and you see all these casinos that are closed, and it's like a ghost town. I went down to Fremont Street, it's like a ghost town, and I was like, "This is surreal, it's like zombie apocalypse." I was actually in shock, because I've lived here a very long time, as you have, I've been here 20 years. I've never, like, you said it, Commissioner, we've never seen anything like this before.
Have never seen anything like it before, and, you know, what really helped me as I was driving, I was trying not to tear up in the car as we were driving, but I said to myself, I said, "Self, you know what, we're going to bounce back from this." And I believe that we're going to be bigger and better and brighter here in Las Vegas. I just believe that our blessings are on the way, just like the rest of this country. But one of the things that made me so proud about our community is that everyone, from your radio station on down the line, everyone is putting everyone's health first.
Yeah, no question.
It's not about the money. I love the fact that from the governor to, you know, across partisan policy, how do you say this word, partisan politics and party lines, people are realizing and trying to put things in place. It was just announced today, don't sweat and don't freak out about income tax, April 15th, it's been moved back. Let's start talking about unemployment benefits, let's start talking about how do we help the airlines, how do we help our casinos, how do we help our small businesses, how do we help people bounce back from this? And so, this is not a time where we need to start strategizing on how to one-up each other, let's start thinking and being creative on how do we help each other survive this so that generations to come won't feel this. I mean, it'll be some type of casualties as a result of this thing, but we can minimize it if we continue to stay on the trajectory we are, and that's each one of us helping each other, because as I heard on your station as I was on hold, we are all in this thing together.
And Commissioner, there's actually been conversations already about the NFL draft coming back to Las Vegas in 2022, as well as Las Vegas getting the Super Bowl in 2025, correct?
You've heard it from the NFL Commissioner. I mean, they're already looking at it, and as I got on the interstate last night headed back home, I looked over and I actually looked at the sign, Allegiance Stadium, and I was like, "Wow."
Yeah.
Who would have ever thought, right here off of our interstate, that we would see this? And so, I am almost positive, I can almost say, I can put my last little coin on it, we will see the NFL draft come back to Las Vegas, and we can almost guarantee, Super Bowl will be right here in our community, and so.
No question, yep, no question. So Commissioner, let's move on to even bigger and more important things, which is, of course, the coronavirus. Talk to me a little about the county's response to this virus. Listen, I agree with the governor, by the way. So you have the governor who shuts down all these casinos for a month, and I respect the governor very much, just as much as I respect Carolyn Goodman. I love Carolyn Goodman, I love Oscar, Oscar's a friend of mine. But Carolyn Goodman disagrees with the governor, she thinks that it shouldn't have been a month, and there have had some disagreements. Where do you see all this?
Well, I 100% agree, they both have their opinions, but I love the fact that everyone is stepping up and doing what's in the best interest of all of our health and safety. We don't know, you know, we're going off of what these experts are telling us. What we do know is, as we're looking at casualties all around the world, and we're looking at cases pop up here and being confirmed right here in our own community every single day, as a matter of fact, another case was just confirmed here today. And so, listen, let me explain something to you, whether you agree or disagree with either one of them, that's not the issue for me. I'm more concerned with what the real specialists and doctors and people out there who are showing us what's going on around the world, that's what's most important to me. And so, I appreciate the fact, our Chairwoman Marilyn Kirkpatrick, along with all of our Board of County Commissioners and our County Manager, Yolanda King, we have said, "We're going to do what's in the best interest of Clark County." So as far as our services are concerned, essential and non-essential businesses, we have our essential businesses, from business licensing to our Department of Family Services, our Department of Social Services, those are essential businesses, those are essential departments, if you will, that need to continue to run. There are other departments throughout Clark County, many of those staff members can work remotely from home and continue on about the business of Clark County. It's about each of us taking care of each other, each of us stepping up to the plate, who am I to tell my staff person while I'm at home, just kind of staying away from everything, but yet I'm making my staff go to work every single day and exposing them to whatever that is that's out there? We don't know if it's airborne or not.
Yeah, we don't know a lot of things, yeah.
A lot of things we don't know. So let's do the right thing, let's work together, let's not wage a war between Carolyn Goodman and Oscar Goodman. At the end of the day, they both have their own opinions, we both love them both, but, you know, we got to do what's in the best interest of the people that surround us and that have put us in these offices, let's put their health and safety first.
Well said, and I think they both certainly are in this for one reason, for they care about the people here, not just in Las Vegas, but of course, across the entire state and the country. Commissioner, I want to ask you one more question, and I guess it might be a loaded one, but right now, you know, we have a pretty good listenership here at KDWN on this show, so you're speaking to a lot of people out there, people, the locals here in Las Vegas and in other areas. So as the Commissioner here in Las Vegas, Mr. Weekly, talk to them right now, there's a lot of people that are scared, there's a lot of people that don't know what's going to come next, how are they going to get their next paycheck? There's a lot of people that are freaking out, for lack of a better term, and rightfully so, we've never had to experience anything like this before, at least I haven't. So I want you to speak to them right now, what would you say to the good people here in Las Vegas?
I'd say to the good people of Las Vegas and the great people of the state of Nevada, please, in the words of the governor, let's not panic, let's prepare, let's take care of each other. I am so concerned, gentlemen, I, my wife, went to Smith's the other morning, we were out there at 6:30 a.m., and the line was wrapped around the building, and to see 60, 70, and 80-year-olds standing in line for water and their daily essentials, it pained my heart. Las Vegas, contrary to what so many people around the world who believe we all live in hotels, right? We are a very caring and giving community, please, let's take care of each other. What frightens me the most is to learn that some elderly people were attacked coming out of a grocery store.
Oh, no.
It's absolutely nonsense.
Where did that happen?
I believe, you know, I heard it was somewhere off of, at one of the Smiths off of Boulder Highway in that area there.
That's terrible, that's awful.
But not only are, you can go in the grocery stores, there's no water, there's no toilet paper, there is no meat on the shelves, but I also have learned that you can't go to a gun store today and find a gun or bullets, because people are afraid.
Right, right, wow, that's scary.
And so, we have to do a good job at making sure we take care of our neighbors, make sure we do wellness checks on one another, pick up the phone and call someone, there's a strong possibility they're going to answer the phone, because we're all at home, right?
Yeah, that's true.
Let's check on each other. Hey, if it's just a matter of, "Hey, guys, hey, Sharp, hey, Shapiro, how you doing? Are you okay? Do you need anything? No, I'm good, Lawrence, all right, buddy, have a great day, if you need me, call me." And then go on to the next person, let's well-check each other. And then at the end of the day, if we see something, pick up that dog on the phone, excuse me, to all my ladies out there, excuse me, you see something that doesn't look right, call the damn police, because there's no room for nonsense. We understand that people are trying to survive, but we can do this thing, we can get through this by helping each other. And I'm so grateful to the both of you guys who love this community, we love you guys, we appreciate you guys, and we just thank you for continuing to love Las Vegas, thank you.
Appreciate that, maybe not Wayne Allen Root, but I think everybody else. Commissioner, I really appreciate what you do, always appreciate it when you take some time to join us, especially during these difficult times, we'd love to have you on again down the road. Thank you so much, you guys are doing a great job, keep up the great work, I support all of you, whether it's the mayor, whether it's the governor, you guys are really fighting for us, and we appreciate you. Thank you so much, Commissioner.
Thank you, gentlemen, you guys be safe, love you guys, and of course, we love our city, we love Las Vegas.
No question, that's never going to change. There you go, there it is, Lawrence Weekly, Clark County Commissioner, taking some time to join us, really well said. You know, we have to, and what he said, yesterday, I made calls to about 15 people, just talking about the crazy times that we're living in. Well, here's what I want to do, I want to take a break, and when we come back, your reaction to Commissioner Weekly, your reaction to our interview with Wayne Allen Root. Also, we also want to hear from you, we want to hear your stories, the trials and tribulations that you've had to go through, maybe it's yourself, maybe it's one of your friends, maybe it's your family during this coronavirus scare. The number to call, 702-257-5396, now's the time, we want to hear from you. Again, that number, 257-5396, and we will take your calls on the other side of the break. You're listening to the Vegas Take right here on the all-new 101.5 FM, 720 AM, K-Don.
Maybe you can relate to this, a lot of people think they're stuck with their health plan, it costs too much, or for whatever reason, they just don't like it, but great news, you are not stuck with it, there is a choice, it's called Metashare, and you could save so much, the typical savings for a family is 500 bucks a month, major difference maker. This is the affordable alternative to health insurance, and just to give you a little more info about Metashare, it's a Christian healthcare sharing ministry, it's worked beautifully for 26 years, has more than 400,000 members, and they've shared over $3 billion of each other's medical bills, so yes, they can help share your needs too, so you're not stuck, there's an excellent alternative, whether you're single or married, you've got a family, Metashare is super flexible, you can choose an option that works for you and start saving lots of money. You can join anytime, they're great to talk to, no pressure. Call 844-91-BIBLE, that's 844-91-BIBLE, 844-91-BIBLE.
Mark Levin, weekdays 3:00 PM to 6:00 PM. Now back to the Vegas Take on 101.5 FM, 720 AM, K-Don.
...taking your phone calls right now at 702-257-5396, again, that number, we want to hear from you, the trials and tribulations that you're going through right now, your personal stories, maybe it's your job, maybe you don't know where your next paycheck is going to be, you don't know how you're going to put food on the table, you can't find toilet paper, whatever your personal situation is, this is your chance to have your voice heard, and we want to hear from you, 257-5396 is the number to call. Let's start off with Johnny. Johnny, you're first up on the Vegas Take, sir, thank you for calling in, what's on your mind?
Hey, what's up, Johnny?
Pleasure, very good show, JD, best to you and your family as well, all of you.
Thank you, we appreciate that.
I was going to call in and say that this isn't the first time that I ever, well, it was the first time I hadn't heard Wayne's voice when it was kind of like a horse, but I wanted, you know, after hearing Mr. Weekly, he just brought the good into me, I mean, he literally, there's a man right there on your radio station that is literal presidential material, and he's just a commissioner.
I'm glad you brought that up, Johnny, and I want to say this, you want to talk about opposite ends of the spectrum, huh? I mean, Mr. Weekly, what a great man, we were just talking about that off the air, I mean, inspirational, you know, a politician yet could be a motivational speaker, right?
Absolutely, Mr. Weekly, if you are still listening, I want to use some words of Mr. President Trump, I love you, you bring such great influence and weight to the people listening, I'm almost, it's just amazing.
Thank you, Johnny, for your phone call, and I know that Commissioner Weekly will appreciate those comments as well. Thank you for the phone call. Yeah, 702-257-5396 is the number to call. Let's go to Ron. Ron, you're next up on the Vegas Take, what's going on?
Hey, what's up, Ron?
Hey, how are you guys, JD? It's me again, I left a message yesterday for Brian about mosquitoes, you know, that could also help spread even more, so, I don't know if you got that yesterday, Brian, but anyway, my question.
I'll be completely honest with you, I'll be, it's not that I ignored your message, I didn't even see it, I haven't had time, I've been extremely busy, as we all have, but I'm going to tell you something, I'm going to make a promise to you, Ron, if you did send me that message through email or Messenger, I will absolutely take a look at it today, I'll make that promise to you, okay?
Yeah, I called back, but I wanted to commend you, and like I told you yesterday, I'll never listen, I'll never listen to Wayne Allen Root again because of his fear-mongering, okay? That was fear-mongering, it scared me when I was.
Can I ask you a question? Did you hear our entire 30-minute interview?
I heard most of it, yes, I did.
What did you think of that? What are your opinions on that? Because I just used his own words.
Well, you know that I'm Republican, but like I said, you had very good, I'm commending you, you did awesome, dude, you did awesome, and I like it, because truly, he frightened me, he really did, he really did scare me, and he doesn't know, the way he was talking was like, "Oh, this is, we're never going to get our economy back," he doesn't know these things.
There's a lot of things he doesn't know.
And when you're talking to someone who has just lost their job, or who is dealing with a lot of, you know, family issues, and when you have a following that size, and if he's a nationally syndicated radio host, and you are, you know, fear-mongering, the things, the things that you just described, that could be happening to literally hundreds of thousands of people across the country, and it just is not good for the country.
Yeah, but take his vitamins, because that'll definitely cure your coronavirus, even though he's not a medical professional, it's just his opinion. Ron, we have a full board of calls, my friend, but I really do appreciate you, I appreciate you calling in, thank you.
Yeah, thanks for the call, Ron.
257-5396, let's go to Clyde. Clyde, you're next up on the Vegas Take, how are you?
Hey, what's up, Clyde?
Great show, this is the first time I ever heard your show, I want to, a little quick preface before I make my statement.
Sure.
Is that I've been in Vegas 18 years, the newspapers print a lot of my letters, and I read the paper every day, Wayne Allen Root, oh, my degree is a philosophy major, he never answered yes or no to your question.
You notice that? What does that say about somebody?
Yeah, yeah, remember, I was speaking from my knowledge, you know, like in philosophy training, another thing, you ask them simple yes or no questions, he never did, and he did something like my professors told me, never let nobody change the subject, he kept changing the subject.
Yeah, I would talk about what he said, you know, saying that, you know, did you make the statement that everybody that's liberal is gay, and then he would totally change the subject, didn't want to address it.
It was constant diversion, and it actually ended up being a total implosion.
And then his only defense, his only defense was, "I've got 20,000 tweets, you're just picking four or five of them."
And you know what, he actually is a very smart guy, he went to Columbia University, he's very well-educated, he's a smart guy.
Well, he didn't sound like it.
But he's clearly an entertainer, and some of the things he says to entertain his audience.
And another thing, that, now, like I say, remember, I read the paper every day and read the comment, and he constantly, always, "I'm the first to do this, I'm the first to do that."
Yeah, and then I said, "You were the first person to say Trump?" I said, "Michael Moore, the biggest liberal in the world, is the one that picked Trump to win." Notice how he didn't respond to that, he just laughed. It's just ridiculous. Anyway, we appreciate your phone call, thank you, we're glad you're a first-time listener, and we hope you will, we hope you will continue to listen, Clyde, and spread the word, thank you for those kind words. Let's go to L. L, you're next up on the Vegas Take, what's going on?
Hey, what's up, L?
Good morning, guys, let me just say quickly, Brian, that was your best interview ever, for those of us who need comic relief, you provided it, and that goes at the top of the list for me, that was hilarious.
Thank you, L, we appreciate that.
I loved it, so, yesterday, I was perfectly fine when I talked to you, but like everybody else, I'm unemployed, and love to play a little live poker when I can, I was looking forward to the Sahara's new poker room and didn't get to do it, however, I decided late in the evening, nothing to do, I said, "What, I'm going to take a walk around the park," and I went to, I think it's Spring Mountain and Durango, really nice park, and now, for some reason, I'm sick, I have a cold, you think it's coronavirus?
No, let me tell you what I had, well, here's, listen, I don't know for sure, L, I'm not a doctor, I can tell you, last week, I had a minor cold, I had the sniffles, and felt good in a couple of days, no fever, no headache, but here's the dangerous thing, L, that I will say, and this is not my opinion, these are doctors, everybody has different symptoms, you don't have to have a fever to have the coronavirus. Our producer has had a cold the last couple of days, we don't know what we have, what I know is that I'm feeling better today, and I never felt bad enough to have to go into the hospital, that's all I know, L.
Yeah, I just got this nipple, so I'm going to, should I go and stock up on vitamin C, you think?
No, here's what I think you should do, and again, I'm not a doctor, drink a lot of fluids, drink a lot of water, the second you have a fever, you need to go to the hospital, okay? If you don't have a fever, and you're feeling okay, and you actually feel like your symptoms are not getting worse, then I think you'll be okay, L.
And especially if you have shortness of breath with a fever, then you need to rush to the hospital.
Correct, that's another symptom that.
Another person, and I'm a great guy, thanks so much.
Thanks, L, we appreciate that.
That great call, L.
Yes, I forgot about JD, you're right, I forgot about the breathing, because that's another very dangerous symptom, mostly seen, correct me if I'm wrong, with older people, but that's what this virus can do to you, that's why some of the elderly are getting so sick, and unfortunately, some of them are passing away.
Well, what it does is, the virus, it basically floods your lungs, and what happens is, it's called a cytokine storm, which your immune system has an overreaction, and it just kind of just shreds your lungs apart from the inside, and turns into a very severe pneumonia, and ends up being called acute respiratory distress syndrome, which is called ARDS, and once that happens, if your immune system is already immunocompromised or suppressed, then you have a very good chance of dying, even with a ventilator.
Yep, so here's what we're going to do, this entire next segment, we're going to hear from you, I know phone lines are full, but please keep trying, we're going to take as many calls as we can next segment. That number is 702-257-5396, again, that number, if you want to be a part of the program, is 257-5396. We're going to get to all your calls on the other side of the break, and here's what we want to know, personal stories, how are you feeling? How is this affecting you and your family? How is it affecting your employment? Also, reaction to the Wayne Allen Root interview, we're certainly getting a lot of reaction from that, a lot of positive, haven't heard any negative from it, only from Wayne, but we will take all your calls on the other side of the break, so join us again, 257-5396, take a quick break, be back right after this. You are listening to the Vegas Take. All right, welcome back, it is the Vegas Take, Sharp and Shapiro, glad you could join us on a Friday, and by the way, coming up here in hour number three, the fun continues, a man by the name of Chris Janetzky, he bought 48 boxes of toilet paper by accident before this coronavirus thing happened, well, now's a good time to have that much toilet paper, he'll be joining us in hour number three, along with the Hollywood conservative, Mr. X. But we're taking your phone calls now, 702-257-5396, we want to hear your personal stories, your trials and tribulations when it comes to this coronavirus, we all got them, right, folks? Let's hear from you, let's start off with Henry, Henry, you're next up on the Vegas Take, what's going on, man?
Hey, what's up, how you doing?
Good, Henry, what's on your mind? How are you dealing with this?
Well, this is kind of, you know, it's sad to see what's going on in the city, you know, I'm not a Vegas native, I've been here in Vegas for two years, I've been working, you know, it's kind of hard, for the past couple of months, I've been living out my car, but I've been trying to get work, you know, and it's this agency that I work for, that they've been helping me get, and we work mostly every day, and a lot of the jobs have been canceled, man, it's like, I was supposed to work yesterday, got canceled out.
Henry, what did you say you did for work, if you don't mind me asking?
Well, I, well, I work for an agency called People Ready.
Okay, so it's an office job?
Huh?
It's an office job?
Well, it's, we do everything, from general labor to hospitality to.
Gotcha, so are you worried where you're getting, you're going to get your next paycheck?
Yeah, man, because it's like, you know, we do have to pay insurance, you know, I do have to pay insurance for my car.
Right, of course, we all do, yeah.
I do have to pay for other stuff, and it's hard right now, you know, and it's like, especially when you're already out here in the streets trying to make it.
Yeah.
And I can't.
Do you have kids, Henry? Do you have a wife? Do you have a family here?
I don't, I'm here in Vegas by myself.
Gotcha, well, Henry, let me be the first one to tell you, and by the way, I do appreciate the phone call, you are not alone, my friend, we all there with you, we are all struggling, we all, not all of us, but many of us don't know when we're getting our next paycheck, we're all worried, we're all scared. Henry, you're not alone, my friend, and just keep this in mind, you know, the politicians, this in mind. You know, the politicians, I'm gonna try to have faith in them, that they're gonna get this done for us, and you're gonna be okay, my friend. 702-257...
Great call, Henry.
702-257-5396. Let's go to Rosalie. Rosalie, you are next up on the Vegas Take.
Hey, what's up, Rosalie?
Hey. Well, I am a third generation native Nevadaan, and I learned from my grandfather, Senator Lamb, and my uncle Ralph Lamb, that sometimes you gotta step up and say things and do things, even in tough times, to keep, do the takes a team to create, uh, create solutions for big massive problems. I really appreciate, uh, some of the things that have been said. And I am, uh, a little concerned, uh...
Yeah? You're not alone.
No, I'm not alone. And, well, I am alone. Well, I'm not alone. We're all in this together. And, you know, have been asked to run for different offices for some time. I've tried to avoid, um, running for politics, because I've seen, uh, good quote, in my family, has we've seen politics make, uh, good man bad, and bad man worse, you know?
Well, you, you make a good point there, but you know, what I, and by the way, Rosalie, I do appreciate the phone call. Uh, gotta get to some other callers, but, you know, uh, politics is a very difficult and, and, and dangerous job, I guess you could say. Uh, if you have any skeletons in the closet, they're eventually probably gonna come out. But you sound like a smart lady.
But maybe in her case, politics can keep a good woman good.
Keep yourself safe. We appreciate the phone call. 257...
Good call, Rosalie.
257-5396. Let's go to James. James, you're next up on the Vegas Take.
Hey, what's up, James?
Robert, this reminds me a little bit of 9/11. You know, on the days, in the weeks, in the months, after 9/11...
All right, get rid of this guy. I don't know why he's replaying something that I said. That sounded like me. And, uh, listen...
I believe that was you, Brian.
When you call into the show...
It actually sounded really good. Well done.
I, I sound great. I have a very sexy voice, by the way. Okay, listen, ladies and gentlemen, when you call into the show, keep your radios down, and please be ready to go, because we're doing rapid fire. We got a lot of people on hold. Let's go to Steve. Steve, you're next up on the Vegas Take. What's going on?
Hey, what's up, Steve?
Hello?
Yes, Steve, you're live with us. Go ahead.
Hey, hi, guys. Hey, I just want to congratulate you both for exposing this guy for what he really is, a phony and a fraud and a liar.
Who are you talking about? I forgot. Hold on, I forgot who you're talking about. Can you say who you're talking about?
Okay, Wayne Allen Root. I repeat, I'm clear.
Thank you.
And, and that's Allen, that's Allen with a Y, not an A, right?
I thought you were talking about our producer, Jason Stein. I just wanted to make sure you were talking about Wayne.
I hope I didn't make anybody nervous. By the way, Lawrence Weekly, I agree with him on this quick. Let's all show love, respect, and consideration, and not be stealing from each other at this time when things are rough. He's absolutely right, and I commend him for what he said. Now, let me just say this. The Public Library of Science, they have a thing called meta-analysis. If you look up colloidal silver, they'll give you a conclusion of many authoritative, validated scientific sources. Here's their conclusion. It has no known health benefits. That's what...
Bingo. Bingo. But let me ask you something. Let me respond to that. And I'm glad you brought that up. Thank you. Uh, when you have a national platform, and sadly, he does, and when you go on your social media page, and you say that it believes, believes it kills the virus, how does anybody not say to him, you gotta be a little bit more responsible with your tweets? That's what I don't understand.
Well, the problem is, he's nothing but a, a two-bit snake oil salesman who hustles people and promotes, knowingly promotes things. He, I really believe he's related to Alex Jones. He doesn't have much, really, much common sense, and he loves to lie. And I'm glad you exposed him for what he is. You did the public a great service. Great performance, you know?
I appreciate that. Hey...
Honestly, that, that was an outstanding interview by Brian. I think Brian is one of the best interviewers in the country, as it is. But he...
Well, I appreciate that.
Completely destroyed Wayne Allen Root in that interview.
By the way, on another note, I wish my dates would say wonderful performance. I wish, I've never heard that from them.
Brian, that is never going to happen. And that's, that's not your fault.
Wait a second. How do you know that? You've never seen me naked before. Anyway, we appreciate the phone call. Thank you for those kind words. We, we do appreciate that. You know, I, I...
We heard things.
We, I'm also, listen, one thing I always do on the show is be honest. You heard things. Screw you, Stein. Uh, but anyway, let's take another call. 702-257-5396 is the number to call. Let's go to Davis. Uh, Davis, you're next up on the Vegas Take.
Hey, what's up, Davis?
Thanks, guys. Uh, yeah, I, I called yesterday about the WHO and what they said on the 14th. I don't know if you had a chance to look that up, but I think, I think that the main question now is, how long are the American people willing to be in lockdown?
Exactly. And that's, and that's, I've been asking myself the same thing after, after...
Who in the world would wait 18 months and do this?
Right.
Anybody? I wouldn't.
After a couple of weeks, people are gonna be asking themselves, is losing my livelihood, you know, in which case that's your job, as well as my hobbies, and pretty much everything I like to do, worth saving 1% of the population that could die of this virus? I believe that question will be asked by a lot of people the next coming weeks. And we'll see how, we'll see how the response, you know, we'll see what the response is.
Let me ask this caller. How long do you think this is gonna last?
Well, I, I think, I think they're looking for two weeks. They're looking for it to spike pretty quick, but I'm not sure it will, because it's still spreading everywhere. Hopefully, spring or summer will help. I mean, temperatures do, do, uh, decline the, you know, the flu virus. Maybe it'll do the same to this, but...
And not only that, I think, I think that...
How long do you think?
Well, I'll answer that by saying, I think minimum one month, like what the governor said. I think at minimum, uh, we're gonna be dealing with this for a month. Now, if you're talking about sports, like the NBA, the NHL, several months, I think it'll be several months before we actually have large gatherings, like concerts. But my question is, if we can't have large gatherings in a month, how can you open up a casino? I appreciate the phone call. It's a very, very, very good question. And I, sadly, I don't have the answer to it. I'm just giving you my opinion on it. Uh, let's go to Lance. I believe Lance is next on the Vegas Take. What's going on, Lance?
Hey, what's up, Lance?
Wow, wow, Brian. This is Ward. Let's get to the Wayne Allen Root beard of problem. Anyway...
Yeah, yeah, exactly.
I, I just want to say this, uh, your interview with Commissioner Weekly, wow, what a great American he is. Uh, and, you know, we've got Vegas strong, and I'm an independent creative. I wrote a song called LV Love Las Vegas. What do you think of that slogan?
Can you play it and sing it for us right now?
I like it.
You want me to sing it?
Absolutely.
Go right now. The floor is yours, my friend. Go ahead, Lance.
LV, what are we gonna do? LV, what are we gonna do? LV, what are we gonna do? LV, we're gonna remain true to you. LV, love Las Vegas. LV, we love Vegas. LV, love Las Vegas. LV, we love you. LV, what are we gonna do?
Wow, that is, I'm impressed!
Really, really good.
Good job. Good job.
That's a solid jig.
I, I tell you, I put you on the spot there. I'm, I'm very impressed, my friend. Let, let me tell you something, okay? When we're, oh, you got a little bit of the music in the background, too, the guitar. I like it. Listen, let me tell you something. Uh, and by the way, I appreciate the call. When you, when, when we're allowed to be back in studio, and when things calm down a little bit, I am gonna offer you an invitation to come in our studio and play that song for us, okay? I hope, I hope, I hope that sounds good to you.
And make sure that you hold him to that.
Yeah, I will. I will. That was...
Just tell him to say stuff on air.
You want to talk about a performance? That was a performance.
Yes, it was.
Two, tears to my eyes. 702-257-5396 is the number to call. Let's go to Doug. Doug, you're next up on the Vegas Take. What's going on? What's up, Doug? Good. What's up, Doug?
Hey, you're discovering talent on your show. That's great.
Yes, that's right.
Vegas got talent.
A couple of comments. Um, I'm an Uber driver. Um, rides are down, but I'm still making money. So, um, I, I wouldn't say putting myself on the front line. I disinfect my car. I wear a mask. So, uh, I'm...
Can I ask you a question? Can I ask you a question about the Uber driving, if that's okay? Um, so you're not allowed to have, what, more than two people in your vehicle? What, what are the rules now?
Uh, well, pool rides are no longer, have been suspended. Now, if somebody requests a ride for them and their friends, that's fine. But, you know, you can't do pool rides.
Gotcha. Okay. Yeah. So how are, so how are you dealing with this situation?
Uh, I used to go out and drive around for rides. Now I just find myself, I park in parking lots until rides come up. I figure not, not waste the gas.
Aren't you worried, though? I mean, aren't you worried? You got all these strangers that are getting in your car, and, and, you know, who knows what they may or may not have? Doesn't, does that concern you?
To, to, to some degree, yes. But, I mean, every time someone gets out of my car, I disinfect the handles, the seatbelts. Um, I'm in pretty good health. I, I take, you know, vitamins. I, hopefully that will help. But I, I'm, I'm also, uh, a Christian. I've got faith, and, you know, if it's my time, it's my time. Uh, I heard a great quote the other day. You can live, you can live with fear, or you can live with space. I'm gonna shoot space.
Well, and then that's a very good point. I think that people stressing out about possibly getting this virus, and how their life is adversely affected from it, that could actually make you more sick, and drop your immune system, and make you more susceptible to getting the virus. So having a positive attitude is, is very necessary, especially during these trying times.
Appreciate the phone call. Glad you're still able to work. Glad you're still able to make money, my friend, and we appreciate that call. 257-5396 is the number to call. Let's go to Beau. Beau, you're next up on the Vegas Take.
Hey, what's up, Beau?
Hey, you know, I just want to bring up that topic that I mentioned yesterday about the Harvard professor that was arrested, and the Chinese national that was arrested at the airport with a biological substance in December.
Yes, sir.
Um, there's been some more developments, and this is just things I've been observing on the news media. So I'd like others, you know, to, you know, hear their input, including yours. You know, and initially, they said that, uh, this virus didn't cause diarrhea. Now they're saying the students in the Wuhan University, the same university that they were headed to with this biological substance from, from our country, they got caught at the airport with it. They're saying, well, now that, that this virus can be transmitted through feces, right?
Yeah, yeah.
So how is all this going down? And how are we not being informed about what happened at that airport? What was in those vials, a biological substance? How the University of Wuhan, which specializes in defection, in infectious diseases, is not being brought up in, in the topics of what's going on here?
And you're totally right. The new studies have come out that about 50% of patients that have the coronavirus experience diarrhea and gastrointestinal syndromes, which was not the case, or symptoms, which was not the case a couple of weeks ago. But yeah, that's just a matter of how it's reported. I don't see it really changing.
What's, what's, yeah, what's your excuse? That sounds like...
I'm totally fine.
That sounds like, uh, the kind of symptoms I get after I go to some of these cheap buffets in Las Vegas. 702-257-5396 is the number to call. We want to hear your reaction to the Wayne Allen Root interview that we did. Uh, Lawrence Weekly, boy, two opposite ends of the spectrum, what they're saying about Lawrence Weekly, which, by the way, I agree with, and Wayne Allen Root. Let's go to Joel. Joel, you are next up on the Vegas Take. What's going on?
Hey, what's up, Joel?
Good morning, guys. Uh, good news, Brian. Wayne Allen Root has been fired by the RJ.
I, I did not know that.
I was just listening to another radio station, and he was on with the host, who you probably know. And, um, he was whining and complaining that the RJ made this huge mistake by letting him go. And he was begging the audience to write to the editor of the RJ to have him come back.
Well, I'll tell people to write to the editor of the RJ, and to have them listen to our interview first before they do so.
Well, regardless, the fact of the matter is, people were listening to what you did, and what you said, and how he responded, and they acted according, accordingly. So congratulations, you did a great job.
So hold on a second. You're saying that he was fired within the last hour?
That's correct.
So you're saying that there's a possibility that Wayne Allen is no longer working for the RJ because of our interview that we just did an hour ago?
Well, um, that's, sounds logical to me. Why else would they fire him so quickly?
That's fair enough. Uh, that could be certainly a possibility. And you know what? I don't feel one bit sorry for him. He buried his own grave, as far as I'm concerned.
And that doesn't surprise me, you know?
He deserves everything he gets.
What did you, what did you think? Joel, did you hear the entire interview we did?
Yes, I did.
What did you make of that interview? What were, you think, the most important parts of that interview to you that resonate?
Well, the fact that he wouldn't answer a question directly. Um, and, you know, I, I'm 65. I've been around the block a few times. And he reminds me of the snake oil-type salespeople who try and sell you on swampland in Florida, you know? Or, uh, buying this great used car where the wheels are falling off. But no, 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 it's not a problem. We can take care of it for you.
How about even better yet? How about even better yet, like the guy from Infowars who says the mass shooting in Connecticut where all these kids died didn't happen?
Well, well, they're, they're all cowards. They're all cowards who don't deserve the air of the public.
You're right. But according to me, according, according to him, I'm the putz, though. I'm the putz. That's what he said.
Well, of course, why would you do that?
And the big, the big issue is, if, if he's getting compensated by whoever makes these type of silver products, or colloidal silver, or alkaline silver, or whatever it is, if that, if that's the case, and he is saying that it literally cures the coronavirus, getting compensated for it, knowing that it does...
Hey, I'll give you one better.
That's a real issue.
I'll give you one better. How about him who says that the N-word is comparable to calling somebody old?
And then, and then he says he's 58, but he's in great shape.
Yeah.
But he's had people, and he looks young, but he's had people that have told him that he should die of stomach cancer.
I'll tell you what's getting old. The conspiracy theorist himself. That's what's getting old. And I'm glad that we were able to expose that on the air. 702-257-5396 is the number to call. Let's go to Brady. Brady, you're next up on the Vegas Take. What's going on?
Hey, what's up, Brady?
Brady, are you there? Did we lose you?
Hello, Brady.
Are you there?
Brady, you're next on, yeah, go ahead, Brady. You're, you're on. Go ahead.
Yeah, you were speaking about digestive issues earlier, and I just got the last double roll of toilet paper at Target. I, I scored.
So how were you able to do that? Explain to us how you were able to do that, Brady, because I, I hear it's a tall task.
I, I walked in. I went to the back. I said, where's your TP? And they're putting it on the shelf. And there was like one left, literally one left. And I was like, right on.
Can I, okay, I, I think we can have some common ground here, Brady. Would you agree that these people that walk into these supermarkets or Target and buy $200 worth of toilet paper are a little bit crazy and selfish?
Uh, I think they were almost like, uh, like a prophecy, or because they knew that this thing caused diarrhea, so they stocked up beforehand.
That, that could be possible. Well, Brady, I appreciate your phone call. I'm glad you're able to get toilet paper, and I'm glad you have, glad you have something to wipe. I'm glad you don't have to use any t-shirts or anything like that.
Good call, Brady. Actually, this is, that was a really, really good call for Brady.
By the way, a guy we have on coming up at 11:30, his name is Chris Janetsky. He bought 48 boxes of toilet paper by accident before the coronavirus scare happened. Uh, boy, he struck gold. He really did. We'll talk to him coming up in a little bit. 257-5396. Let's go to Joe. Joe, you are next up on the Vegas Take. How are you?
Hey, what's up, Joe?
I'm great, guys. Thanks for staying online, uh, you know, out on the radio, and bringing us all this information in regards to what's going on in our country. Um, Brian, I tell you, man, uh, when I heard that Uber driver talking about, you know, his faith, uh, that made me want to call you and tell you guys that that's what we're missing here. You know what I'm saying? These people that are buying up toilet paper that you're talking about, uh, you know what I, I've been trying to figure it out. What does toilet paper have to do with a respiratory illness or disease? And I can't figure it out. And then I thought to myself, rather than saying exactly what I thought, I'm just gonna tell you, shirt for brains.
I agree with you. And to, to, not to make light of this situation, but I will say this. When I use the toilet, and somebody goes in there after me, they have respiratory issues. That's all I'm gonna say. But, but listen, in all seriousness, I get what you're saying. There's a lot more serious things out there that, uh, are going on with this coronavirus than, you know, uh, people not being able to buy toilet paper. I, I agree with that sentiment, and I appreciate that. And we all need to remember that, Joe. So thank you very much. 702-257-5396 is the number to call. Let's go to Tom. Tom, you are next up on the Vegas Take.
Did you say Thomas?
Thomas. Go ahead, my friend.
Yes, I, I heard your conversation earlier this morning about the, uh, Easter lily.
I'm sorry, about who?
You, you were having a conversation this morning about the Easter lily?
I have no idea what you're talking about.
Is that a flower?
Talking about the Easter lily, the flower?
No, I, we, we're not talking about a flower, but you can tell us what it is. I don't know. I don't know. What is an Easter?
I thought it was your station that I heard it. The Easter lily has the exact opposite chemical properties of a cell.
Okay.
Okay.
So it's a message for biologists to go examine how that relates to dealing with some of the 50 trillion cells that are in the body.
Okay, gotcha.
If, if what I say I know about it, it, it would be, uh, like, uh, one of those salesmen.
Well, um, I, I...
I went to Walmart, uh, the other day. I bought a case of Corona and flaxseed. Because if I grind flaxseed fresh every day, drink it with a big glass of water, it's probably the best food on the market, uh, to deal with the immune system.
Well, listen, let me be clear. I, I, listen, if you're doing something that you think works for you, all the power to you.
Well, did you go to Whole Foods to buy this? Or where'd you, where'd you buy it from?
Yeah, I mean, that's just, I don't know. Either that guy was pranking us, or he was listening to a really boring radio show. Yeah, it sounds great. Yeah, let's, let's do 30 minutes on the Easter lily.
I'm actually kind of interested.
You like that kind of stuff.
Easter lily right now.
Who do we have next, Stein, on the line?
It looks like Eddie, I believe.
Eddie, you're next up on the Vegas Take. What's going on?
Hey, what's up, Betty?
Yeah, it looks like Sheldon Adelson's, uh, Review Journal, uh, just dumped Wayne Allen Root as a, uh, uh, what do you call it, an independent contractor columnist. Did you know that?
Uh, we just got a phone call, a few calls ago, that said the same thing. I don't know if that has anything to do with that interview we just did, but that certainly would not surprise me.
Yeah. Well, Adelson, uh, you know, i- his wife's, uh, uh, sort of in, uh, in, uh, healthcare in some respects. So, I mean, it might, it might make, uh, make him, uh, look bad.
Well, that makes sense. Yeah.
See, you know, and whatever. I was in Japan back in 1980, and they had these Pachinko parlors, these old pinball machines. And they had a robot coming down and cleaning